For a regular session on November first, two thousand seventeen, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we'll welcome any public comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee officer reports. I have nothing on the president's section. Mr. Vice President, do you have anything?
I do. I have one item. I would just like to welcome our newest judge, Judge Jar. That was at his bring-in ceremony. Very nice, well-attended event, and I welcome him aboard to our team of judges.
Great. Okay. Highway.
Oh, did you already have the, never mind. Miscellaneous, I was doing something else. Pardon me. You're rolling now. Actually, I just want to slow you down.
All right, there you go.
No, I'm just kidding.
Highway.
We did not meet.
Okay.
We had a meeting, and we sent out the minutes previous to our joint meeting with the commissioners, and we're going to have another finance committee twenty-second of this month.
Great. Okay, personnel.
We did not have a meeting, and we will address some of those personnel issues further down in our agenda.
Okay. Miscellaneous, Mr. Ayers.
Yes, sir. On October the eighteenth, Council Fred Green and myself traveled to Greenville, South Carolina, at the invitation of Hamilton County visitors, tourists. Brendan Myers invited us to go down there. We went to Greenville, South Carolina, at her request, along with the mayor of the city of Noberville, with Chris Jennings, who's also on the Noberville City Council, a representative for the Fishers, to look at the Riverwalk down there. It is a central attraction to that area, and so they wanted to see us. It is kind of interesting. It's a smaller town. It looks like it's about fifty, sixty thousand square people, if it's that large, but it has a massive, it's kind of unique, because it has an MSA of, I think they said, six, seven-hundred-thousand people or something like that, so it's a big draw to that area. It's kind of unique, but anyway, we looked at it, and I just wanted to let you know.
Do you have anything, Dad?
No, it was an interesting trip when it comes to seeing what proper developmental planning can have an impact on a city, but he mentioned that it's one city concentrated, MSA of eighty thousand people.
What's your MSA?
It's just the population around there, so that's the city that eight-hundred-thousand people are going to go to, are going to pour in there from vast areas, so, but it was still very interesting, to say the least, so.
Fred, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I understand. It's a statistical area.
Paul, just taking statistics from that group.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Unfinished business, we're moving on.
We did actually meet for personnel, just as a, just to clarify, because I think we get them confused, but we did meet for personnel for the items that are on the agenda.
Okay.
Just so we were.
Okay.
So it doesn't make that there was just a poll, we actually had dialogue, open dialogue.
There you go.
It's the twenty-first, I believe.
Twenty-first? Okay.
Thursday, twenty-first.
Yeah, we did.
I'm just kidding.
We actually argued against the counter.
Moving on. All right, now, we are moving on to unfinished business, board appointments. We're going to just go to the ones that are highlighted, madam auditor. Okay, Phil Collie, twelve thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, Ms. Ayers.
I have a written response. I talked to a lady from Noberville, who is of the right political party, who is interested in serving on this board, and I have an email in my cubicle, I made copies for you, but I have a response from her. If we want to replace this person, I have nothing against Mrs. Collie, but I was under the understanding that she goes to Florida in the winter.
Okay. That's what I was told. Yes, sir.
So I would make the motion that we appoint Paul Gillum to the Alcohol Control Board.
Where's that, the letter for her, is that in here?
No.
Brad says he has it.
I got it in the back. I'll make you a copy if you want me to. I didn't know we were going to do this now or in January, but I have contacted her personally.
I'd like to do it in January, personally.
That's okay with me, and by that time, I'll make copies for you.
Okay. All right, table that one in. Motion to table that. What do we need to do that way?
I think we typically just do it in June.
We just do the rest of these in January?
We did some last month.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just because some of them expire, you know, expire December, so January, January means, what, the sixth, right?
Yeah. Any of them that get, like, pressing business that need these appointments made.
Well, we did have a request from the city of Fishers, even though one of their appointments isn't up until February first, they asked that we made the appointment by the end of the year, so I don't know how we want to handle those ones that are rolling in February as well.
We only have, like, four of them that are highlighted.
Yeah.
That we did the rest last month.
Five of them, actually, yeah, but one of them, two of them on the same board.
We did do specifically, even the ones that are up in eighteen that are on this list, you see what I'm saying? This one specifically that was in your packet, it's up on February first, so we're going to wait until January then for that one?
Well, it expires February first.
Correct, right? But so, they asked that we have that person for the entire year appointed for that year, so I'm just asking about what we're going to do.
I'm fine with that. I'm just saying, I'm looking at five, that we had highlighted yellow, which we did do last month, because we didn't have the letters.
Okay, well, let's move on here to the next one. Bob Voudre.
I would make a motion to appoint Bob. We have his letter.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Peter Buller here. There's two of them, Bob Gudnik, the second, Mark Spina.
So moved.
Just a moment. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Just to bring you up to speed. He's got cancer.
Okay, do we have another one? Do we just want to put that on and change it with later on? Okay. All right, motion, I was, a second.
Okay, do we have letters from these people? I think we do.
They sent a packet for Bob.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Let's move to second, if all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Seconded.
Paul did. Yeah. Glenn Schwartz, Hoosier Head is court authority. I'll make a motion for that. Say, all those in favor? Okay. Is there any more?
And then, do we go ahead, at the request of the city of Fishers, and just?
I know, we make him sweat.
We go ahead on the Fishers Economic Development Board, the appointment of Chris Jeter, so he's up February first. He did express his interest.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that.
I am too. We might want to wait a few days.
That's funny, that guy waited.
I sent my cell.
Oh, okay. He's running.
I'm making the motion.
All those in favor? All right. Moving on, table of business. We have the rainy day fund, additional appropriation, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for stable thirty-seven marking. I'm going to make a motion to untable that.
Seconded.
Okay, and moving seconded to untable this item, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none? That is for discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded, okay. Moving seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I read the, was that a, was that a negotiator? Did they bring that up, or did you bring it up?
It was a collective dialogue ultimately, on how do we get the project moving forward, and so it was basically, Troy with RQAW had stated that he was happy to have council's involvement, and so, then I spoke with Brad, and the dialogue just continued to go to the committee of five.
No, I think it was trying to find a way to move forward. It just gets sitting there for months now, so. All right, let's move to second, if all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none? I would like to make a motion to combine B and C. Whoa, we make a motion, wait a minute. To make a motion to clear untabled items, you want to do that for just?
Let's just do separately.
You want to do it separately?
Yes.
Okay. Why isn't that?
Because I talked to Chris today.
Oh, you did? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to, go ahead and make the motion then for the next one.
I'm going to table B.
Is that a table?
No.
I mean, maybe.
Historically, we tried to clear table business at the last meeting of the year.
Oh, okay. So, let's.
See, I'll move my motion if I need to. Okay, I'm happy to make a motion, thinking that there won't be a second, and this thing will die. How about that?
There you go.
Make a motion to untable the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for track restoration from Noberville to Atlanta. Yeah, no, I need a second off the table, then we'll make another motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, now, oh, you need, we need a vote, don't we?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'll make a motion for seven hundred fifty thousand dollar loan for the twelve miles of track between Noberville and.
Okay. There we go. So, no second, so that dies.
All right, now, table, item C.
I would move to untable it.
Okay, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I can't remember what the fifteen thousand dollars.
Filing cabinets.
Filing cabinets.
We wanted filing cabinets, and, yeah. Good, Chris is here. This is not. Huh?
Yeah.
I make a move, a motion to approve, so you can.
Seconded.
Yeah, so this was for the coroner, I believe, is what you're talking about. And I have been working with the coroner, I've been working with the coroner to determine how we can scan his documents electronically, and I think the best solution is moving forward, we scan electronically and don't create any more files, but we need to deal with the back scan, and I think that's, economically, that's the best solution, because we own the licensing for the document management software ready. The amount of files he generates won't cause us to have to purchase any additional storage. The only, and a point I made in my text is, I think the coroner, the State Coroner's Association is still saying that paper is the only, paper or microfilm is the only accepted long-term retention. The clerk thinks that's going to change. I talked to Tammy as well during this time.
Just to, just to chime in, I work with the coroner quite a bit, as you all know. That is true, but there are certain documents and evidence, and especially the photography work, which cannot be microfilmed, it has to be the original photographs.
So he's been scanning, he's been scanning, or not thorough started before him, they've been scanning all their photos since two thousand seven, and so those are scanned and saved as a digital image or ready. Those would be easily importable into a document management system and indexed, along with everything else.
I understand, but the way I understand it as well, they can do that, but they still have to keep the photos in a file themselves.
Yeah, and again, that's something that I think, in talking to Tammy, the clerk, I think she thinks that, she thinks that the state records, that's going to be changed on the state record side, so.
But what about our fifteen thousand dollars?
I'm comfortable if we reduce it down to five, if that makes it through, because you mentioned you thought one cabinet might be sufficient.
Well, yeah, I don't know, I don't know how big those cabinets are, so I didn't have any conversation about the cabinets, so in terms of how many he needs, I don't know if that was just to account for what he had there currently, or if he was accounting for growth.
He did say he needed fif, he did the fifteen thousand dollars amount of cabinets. Now, if this is, the way I understand it is, we're not going to reduce what we got now, and is that?
You are, you are correct in that statement. Whether they change it or not, he still has to maintain those original records. There are some that he even keeps in a safe that go a long, long way, and even if they do change the statutes, et cetera.
Okay, well.
Don't mean he won't have to purchase additional file cabinets in the future. This is basically just to protect what is on site now, because they're, as you all saw the pictures, they're in those file boxes, and.
Yeah, they're not.
It is not the best way to keep them.
No, I agree.
Again, I don't think it's a valid use of money to put into that. Nobody's going to ask for them from a hundred years ago.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a fact of asking for it. I think if the sprinkler systems go off.
Then all those files.
Is ruined.
And so what? So what?
Well, we could be liable.
Okay. Let me just clear.
What is the alternative?
Let me clear what you're, again, I work with him, and I don't want to argue with you at all, I'm just going to try to clear the muddle a little bit. Every single day that they're there, there are people that call in and need them to go back into those records. I think Chris can verify that. It's, then they go a hundred years, they go, they've got an open case again that was, I think, ten or twelve years old.
Yeah, he mentioned one.
It's a constant battle of going back to that evidence that they keep by.
Mostly insurance companies, he said.
I think.
Yeah, exactly. A lot of it's insurance companies.
I think the coroner's shown to be a pretty good steward of the county's money. I would move that we give him the money, he spends what he needs, what he don't need, he won't spend, knowing that he's going to do it electronically.
I agree with Brad, they're tighter than two goats a loose hide out there. They're not going to waste any money.
And I do think, I do think that moving forward, after visiting with them several times, I think going down the document management road is the right way to go, because he's already scanning the documents, so it's not going to change his process, it's not going to interrupt him, and it'll be in a system that he can search much easier and find things much quicker. So when a call does come in, he can simply go into that document management system, search for name, case number, whatever, and it'll pull up all the related documents, and so I think it's going to benefit him from an efficiency standpoint, moving forward anyway. And then if they change the law, then we have those electronically stored.
And they should change the law. It's very antiquated. It is really antiquated, but at this point, they do need to maintain the records that they have.
And I, I think the case you're talking about is the one, I think, that happened in nineteen eighty-three, where there was a man that drowned, drowned and geist.
Geist, Roseby.
And the lady has come back recently this year, and she's challenging if it was an accidental death or not, where she is saying that she believes it was murder. So they're going through all his notes and so forth, and he's got to go through boxes for that.
Call for the question.
It's already been moved, it's seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
A waste of money.
New business, approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sheena Randall, family medical leave policy update calendar versus rolling date. Is there a motion?
Well, Sheena called me on the phone today, during the day, and was giving me the rundown, and finally I just had to stop her.
What, do you get a motion? We could discuss.
So moved.
Seconded. Okay, go ahead.
And she wanted to give me the complete explanation, which I was not prepared to hear at that particular moment. It's kind of lengthy, but she said she would be here next month to explain it, so I guess that's okay. I know that, I think, Raina's here, but it doesn't entail a lot of county money, but if we're going to change policy, I'd just as soon know about it ahead of time.
Brad, they're wanting to implement that January one.
I know they are, and I'm prepared to vote for it, but going on faith here, right?
Isn't it simply, you can obviously answer this question, isn't it simply just going from a calendar year where they can, let's just say, for instance, you take two weeks off at the end of December, then you qualify for another two weeks in January. I'm not saying people abuse, I'm just saying, but instead of doing that, it's going to go to a twelve-month thing, in my understanding.
That is correct.
And we talked about it in personnel as well, so.
It's called stacking.
Well, the previous, what we're currently using right now, the calendar year, where individuals are eligible January first through twelve thirty-one of the calendar year, moving forward, what we'd like to do is we send out the required notice to employees on November first, letting them know in advance that we would be moving to a forward method, so when they make application for leave in the new year.
Well, the, the previous, what we're currently using right now, the calendar year, where individuals are eligible January first through twelve thirty-one of the calendar year, moving forward, what we'd like to do is we send out the required notice to employees, um, on November first, letting them know in advance that we would be moving to a forward method. So when they make, um, application for leave in the new year, that date will be used anytime throughout the rest of that one-year period. We'll look back to see, do they still have twelve weeks, or, you know, if they took, let's say, February one of twenty eighteen, they make a request for leave and they only utilized eight weeks. Well, November of twenty eighteen, they make a new request for leave, we're gonna look back to February first, see that they only utilized eight weeks, subtract that from there, allowed twelve weeks, and that will give them four weeks for the remainder of that calendar year period. Correct?
Aren't we going to a, a separate vendor outside the county to handle this particular issue rather than the HR department? That's what I was more concerned about.
Correct. That's through FMLA source.
Vendor to handle FMLA, uh, requests rather than HR department.
Well, HR department, we will still be, um, working alongside the disability team here in the auditor's office where we, when employees make requests for leave, they will be sent over to the third-party vendor. Third-party vendor will be sending out notifications. We have the accessibility, as well as our supervisors, to review ongoing requests to make sure that employees are making application for that leave, and that they're getting the, um, responses in a timely fashion.
Say personnel's reviewed this.
I spoke, I should, I may be speaking out of tune, but I recall a small dialogue during personnel, and it may have just been me at the remaining. So, I'm familiar with it. I'm comfortable with it, but.
I'm comfortable. I spoke to Sheena at length today, so I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Amendment to the sheriff pension plan, is there a motion?
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Okay, seconded. Uh, sheriff, what is this?
Plan, it basically changes the actuarial equivalence assumptions that are used, um, by McCready and Keane, who's the actuary for the account. It also makes some adjustments within the plan, adding a, uh, what, currently an eight-year vest, changing that to a ten-year vest. Also provides a death benefit for unmarried. Quest changes are neutral, cost neutral to the plan.
Okay.
The mayor boards reviewed it and signed off on it. It will need counsel, uh.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, don't we have a sheriff's committee? Anybody see this before it got here?
Stan Brown from McCready and Keane is here, if you have any questions specifically, uh.
Nothing? Okay. All those in favor?
Well, yeah, no, it should've went through the sheriff's committee. I've been here long enough that when we went through the last recession, when the sheriff's merit deputy pension didn't fund itself, they were back in front of the county council to make up the shortfall. So when you tell me it's revenue neutral, I, it's not that I don't believe ya, it's just that I got a long enough memory where, where.
Anybody else on this?
Mark, so you're saying it's revenue neut- or cost neutral because of the mortality rate changes?
I'll, I'll turn it over to Stan to answer that, but yes.
Um, Stan Brown with McCready and Keane. Um, the sheriff explained it pretty well. The, the first item, there's, there are four items in the amendment. The first item is, um, impacting a, a small percentage of the plan. It's those participants who retire out of drop. And if they want their drop accumulation paid as a monthly benefit, this, um, section, item number one, changes how that's calculated to be a market-based calculation. If you're familiar with PERF, they have the annuity savings account for everyone in, in PERF and the defined benefit side. They have made a very similar change where they've gone to market-based calculations if someone retires and wants their annuity savings. In fact, they are outsourcing, um, the responsibility to an insurance company effective one one eighteen to do that. Not doing that here. Um, that has the potential in, in this plan to, you know, save a little bit of money because it's gonna be a, a, a market-based calculation, you know, some, someone exits drop ten years from now. It's gonna use life expectancy and interest rates that are applicable at that time to determine the, the, uh, drop benefit as a monthly amount. Second item, here is, um, adding a, or changing the service, the service requirement for new hires for normal retirement, so they have to have ten years of service and be age fifty-two. Currently, it's age, um, fifty-two and eight years of service, okay? So that has the potential to save some money. It's for new hires. Um, item three in the amendment changes the vesting for someone who, uh, severs employment before reaching retirement age. New hires, it's gonna be ten years rather than eight. That has, uh, potential. Fourth item is, um, pre-retirement death benefit for unmarried vested officers. Bar actuarial calculations, assuming all of the active participants are married and already eligible for a pre-retirement death benefit, and so, um, adding the, the unmarried, what I'll term the unmarried death benefit is, um, doesn't impact the funding requirement that, uh, has been established for two thousand and eighteen.
Okay.
I have a question.
Alright.
And did, did, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the, the company you were with?
Keane Keane. We're part of One America.
Okay, and my second question to you is, with these adjustments, is your company making more money?
We don't handle the assets. We just do the actuarial work, charge for the plan amendment, so. I guess the answer would be yes, on that basis.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Thank you. We look at item number one as, um, pseudo-required to keep the plan in, uh, compliance with the state statute, which says that drop has to be actuarially neutral. That's doing that here.
Okay, anymore? Anybody else on this? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm opposed. I don't have any problem with your, your mathematic works or the sheriff's request. I just think something has to do with the sheriff's pension. I oughta come through the sheriff's committee before it gets here.
Okay. Resolution twelve six, thank you. Twelve six seventeen, want a resolution concerning the real, uh, purchase of real estate for one hundred and forty-sixth Street Phase Three project, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's.
Hey, uh, what is, what is Phase Three?
Sorry?
What is Phase Three project?
Talon to Shelburne, I believe.
Okay, good enough. What year do you estimate will hit the county line?
We're closed.
Phase Three, that you're talk, looking at tonight, scheduled for letting in October of next year. It'll get started, and it'll ba- basically be built in nineteen. The last mile from Shelburne to the county line, scheduled for letting in October of nineteen, built in twenty.
Twenty. Twenty will make it to Boone County?
Hopefully by the end of twenty, we'll be done.
Thank you.
You gotta stop right there, huh? Just can't keep going forward.
No, we don't build roads in other counties.
Don't do that, right? That's nice.
Nice, but.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, resolution for funding of the jail expansion project as discussed in our joint meeting, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
What was the final number, uh?
Thirteen point one.
Thirteen point one?
Yep.
Okay.
And I have a question. Don, were you able to make that change, or? Okay. Okay, and are you comfortable with that February eighteenth date? That, that, I think that has a date that was in. Okay, because I didn't know if you, if, if it's, I didn't memorize it, but if it says that exactly or approximately that date.
We're gonna do it for the February meeting, and then everything will be advertised, and then if not, you'll just table it, and then we can do it in March. And then that shouldn't affect the April.
So by, us, if we were to pass this resolution, the commissioners and the contractors can move ahead? They can? That, uh? No, it's not appro- but, so they can, they have that hundred and twenty-day, uh?
Right.
Yeah, we can go ahead with the bid process.
Yeah, what was done.
And we did discuss this at length in the joint meeting, just in case everybody's aware, unaware of that. Is the, uh, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no one opposed? Let's move on.
Opposed.
You are, oh yeah, opposed, one opposition, okay. Alright, interlocal agreement between City of Carmel and Hamilton County for the ninety-sixth Keystone project, is there a motion?
Still moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion on this item? Yes, right here.
In here, does it say where the two millions come?
Could be major bridge, right?
Say that in the interlocal?
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Brad, is that money appropriated for major bridge?
Bridge, it's already appropriated.
Out of major bridge?
In major bridge.
Okay.
We're trying to get it spent this year, so we don't have to reappropriate it next year.
Okay.
I did.
And I seconded.
I just, I just wondered, I'll throw in the amendment, because I don't see it in here that it is.
Okay.
Subject to coming to major bridge. Okay.
Alright, all the, everything good? All those in favor?
That's.
Aye.
Agree.
Okay. Um, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. Got eight, one through nine. Any desire? Item number A, one thousand general fund requesting four hundred and twenty-four thousand nine sixty-eight amount available for additional appropriation. Thirty-eight million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven seventy-six, is there a motion?
That's, that's not an appropriation.
Well, there's, there's, there's seven, eight, nine items under this to discuss unless you wanna combine them.
No, I wanna go one at a time.
Wanna go one at a time? Alright, well, is there a, a motion for the assessor transfer of one dollar?
So moved.
Second.
There you go. Okay, is there any discussion on the one-dollar transfer from them? Be none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, auditor, job description update, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Building and grounds, two thousand and seventeen, should be two thousand and eighteen on the one forty-four amendment, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Judicial services transfer of ten thousand dollars, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. ISSD, number five, um, item one, under five one, is two thousand, five, I, two thousand and eighteen, one forty-four amendment, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second part of this, number five, transfer of sixteen thousand, seven seventy-one, ninety-two, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we got an additional, four hundred and fourteen thousand, nine sixty-eight, is there a motion?
So moved, for discussion.
But what, Amy, what's the four hundred and fourteen thousand, you know?
So, the money actually, and Robin is here, um, is actually for her department specifically, but it's being at the request, um, through ISS. Um, it has to do with Computronics, which is somebody that we currently use, and they basically are building a new module. Um, and I don't know if you want to elaborate further as far as it has to do with the software for personal property. So. It was approved by the ISS board, um, and obviously I am a sponsor just.
We'll have the assessor give us the, the rundown.
Right. So, basically, the system that we are using is no longer meeting our needs. It's not, we've gotten too big. And we have to divide it into four databases. If you're in Noblesville, somebody calls from Carmel, you gotta get on Noblesville, go into Carmel to look up their, their information. We would like the database to, to fit the whole county. The merges aren't going very smoothly anymore. We merge our residential or our real estate, commercial and residential smoother than we merge our personal property, and there's only like, what, what did I put here? Twelve thousand five hundred parcels. So it's just, just gotten to where it's just not feeding, fitting our needs anymore. There's been no updates, nothing new.
Okay, so you need four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to do this deal?
But yes, please.
Uh, Robin, do you have like a, uh, assessor's cornerstone perpetuation hide the money fund that we could take us out of?
I don't have anything like that. I wouldn't even know how to get anything like that, no.
You don't get a certain amount of fees that we collect from the public who?
I do not.
There you go.
Sorry.
That'd be nice. Any questions?
Before Robin leaves, uh, and we vote on this, I have a non-related, i- if I could indulge for a non-related.
Let's vote on this first.
That's what I just said.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the assessor?
Chris, is there anything you wanna elaborate?
No, other than, we worked, Julie worked with Computronics. They worked with Robin's office to spec this all out. It will interface directly into our tax system, feed directly, and it, it will be a much smoother process.
Any more discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? See none? You got a question for the auditor?
I- if it's okay, it had nothing to do with.
The assessor or auditor?
Our, our assessor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
It's okay.
Her?
That's the assessor.
The assessor.
Robin's the assessor and Robin's the auditor.
This is a, a, an assessor question. I, I was just wondering, uh, i- is there any, um, update on the, uh, dark stores getting the same property assessment as operating stores? Do you have any luck at the legislature?
Well, uh, a, a decision just came down from the IBTR, the Indiana Board Tax Review yesterday, from Clark County. The assessor lost. The, I was actually gonna send all of you the determination because they chewed up the assessor's appraisers, and the re, the petitioner's appraisers, they gave them glowing remarks. So, it's, the fight still continues, and they compared it, and you can bring in the dark sales, but they're comparing it to a closed business, basically. So the county did lose another one, and so far, I mean, our big one coming up is Target.
What do you got for, for Lowe's on Lowe's Parkway? I'm just trying to think, how, how's this gonna affect all this TIF financing that they're doing, where they're, they're basing all this on future value that's not gonna be there now?
Right. Absolutely. And a lot of these go back years.
On, on Lowe's Parkway, is there anything from that?
Uh, no, our Lowe's, we've settled all those.
All those were good here?
We've settled Meyer.
But I mean, if, if, if it get, comes that, that these assessors keep losing, we could, this could be a domino effect in our county, right?
Yes, we would have to lose, we would have to lower, um, all commercial values because why would, why wouldn't warehouses come forward? Why wouldn't drugstores come forward?
Exactly.
They're all gonna wanna be treated the same way.
I think a pharmacy has come in.
We do have, uh, we settled on Walgreens and CVS.
What would happen at that point with, with that type of TIF financing that's been put in place all over the county?
Well, I, it would be a disaster, I would think, because most of our big boxes are in, you could correct me if I'm wrong, I believe they are in TIF districts. And we do reach out to the economic developers, let them know when we're having these appeals, and asking them for their support, basically. Town officials stepped up big time on a recent one we had, and they actually, I won't tell who the, the taxpayer was, but they withdrew their appeal. Um, you know, it's, it's costing the counties a board of two hundred thousand to defend these at the IBTR, and we're still losing. And we've got some good evidence and some, some good information, but it, it would, it would be, I think I presented, I don't know if you were on the council when I met with you and presented to you if we had to slash our values in half, what it would look like. And it would be, it would be bad, but we would do it and then just go forward and then.
Yeah, we, we would have to do something that would be disastrous. I mean, we, I mean, I, I think TIF is pretty common in Hamilton County, right? It's all over the place, so.
Robin, who is the board or the decision-maker that decides?
The IBTR?
Yeah.
They're made up of, um, law judges.
They are lawyer, uh, they are judges?
Administrative law judges.
And, and who do they work for? The state?
The state. Appointed.
So if we had concerns, it'd be best to pass them along to our state representatives?
Yes, which is what the assessors have been trying to do for, I don't know, the last six years, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll send you that, that determination. Thank you.
Item number, first item under number six, a transfer free, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, additional appropriation for EMA of ten thousand dollars sponsored by Palsum, yeah. It's been pulled, okay.
Additional?
It is, okay.
Okay.
So, we're on the, the two thousand and eighteen, one forty-four amendment? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven, prosecutors, one, two thousand and eighteen, one forty-four amendment, is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I have a question. Uh, Amy, on, on these one forty-four amendments, I'm assuming none of these have, uh, a monit- I, I have a question. Uh, Amy, on, on these one forty-four amendments, I'm assuming none of these have a, a monetary impact to the county?
My knowledge, no.
Okay. Good enough.
Okay, sheriff, two thousand eighteen, one forty-four amendment, three.
Did we get the prosecutor?
Yeah, we moved and voted on it, then you asked a question, so. Um, sheriff, two thousand eighteen, one forty-four amendment, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Probation, number nine, transfer of twenty thousand three dollars, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the two thousand eighteen, one forty-four amendment, two of them, is there a motion?
Still moved.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hamilton County Airport Authority, transfer of one dollar under item B, is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Transfer three thousand, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item C, ten twenty-five Airport Capital Fund, transfer of eleven thousand dollars, is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eleven twenty-two, Community Corrections Project Income Reduction of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine eighty-three.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we got Major Bridge Fund, requesting half a million amount available for additional appropriation, nine million one hundred seventeen eight ninety-five. Oh.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Steve, since you're sponsor, can you tell us what this is, please?
Pleasant Street Bridge.
All right, all those in favor?
I got a question real quick on that. Do they have a, I mean, approximate, is nine million gonna cover it? They think it's gonna be a three million dollar bridge, they think it's gonna be a twenty million dollar bridge? Is there a ballpark there?
That's these guys right here on the front row, our Hamilton County Highway Director.
Don't know exactly what it costs, but the original estimates were in the two and a half to three and a half million range.
Okay, and is it gonna be a pedestrian on both sides, walkways, or do you know what, you're, you're looking to design?
Right now, there'd probably be, be a, a multi-use path on one side of the bridge.
Okay.
But there's been some talk within the city of Noblesville about converting the old Trust Bridge to a ped crossing.
Okay.
Which may change whether we put the multi-use path on this bridge or not. So, still up in the air a little bit, but there will be pedestrian accessibility across the river.
Okay, so you are talking to the city of Noblesville?
Oh yeah, this is all coordinated with the city.
The reason I said that is based on their trip that they took, if they ever want to develop both sides of the river down the road. I have a feeling people will be coming back to us, asking us to put a pedestrian walkway at least on one side of the bridge or the other.
Well, that's actually gonna be the crossing of, I think it's called the Midland Trace, it's gonna cross there as well.
Okay.
What is the eighty-five thousand bias, uh?
Eighty-five thousand is to get the engineering, um, work started, which will do the, we're just on engaging them right now to do the hydraulic analysis, to size the structure and to determine a structure alternative, and determine what that might be, and then after that, we'll have to supplement, and after we decide what the exact, exact design will be.
Is this, is this the first money we've actually spent on that bridge project? Do we have any other preliminary, anything that we've done?
Other than past studies that we've done, yeah, this is it.
So, this is really the first step?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great news. Brad, I do have one question for you. I met with, for a few hours this week with officials from the city of Noblesville, and there was some discussion about, uh, river access alongside that bridge for safety concerns. Noblesville could get in and out of water there with their safety equipment.
Okay.
Um, as this starts to proceed, if you could look into that, that would be very, very helpful and
We'll talk to them about that.
Yeah, and be able to work with the city on that.
Right.
As much voting traffic there is, they, serious concerns about getting in and out there.
Well, we'll make a note of that.
Okay, that's all I have.
Hey, can I interrupt from one item? This is a last minute item that you have in front of you, and it's a transfer of appropriation from, it's in the MBH fund. And what this is, is just a reconciliation of year-end salaries.
Five bucks.
It's the pennies.
I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and interrupt you and move that we, uh
Well, we have, we have to vote on, and we have a motion now, we have
Yeah, yeah.
On this one? Okay, no.
No, no, not that one.
Huh?
No.
Oh, shoot, okay.
Yeah, we're still in this.
For the eighty-five thousand, sorry.
Yeah. It's been moved to seconded, is there any more questions on this?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the non-reverting operating fund.
The five dollars.
We need to add this to the agenda.
Is it, where's it at?
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
A motion to, uh, to add in the agenda?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now Paul.
I'll make a motion that we approve the five dollars.
That is awesome.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, moving on. Uh, non-reverting operating requesting fifteen thousand, amount available for additional appropriation, five eighty-four eight eighteen, is sponsored by Rick McKinney. It says fifteen thousand here, but ten thousand on the sheet.
There's two sheets.
Okay, two, okay. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guardian ad, light item, requesting ten thousand, amount available for additional appropriation, one hundred and thousands, thirty thousand nine thirty-one, sponsored by Councilwoman Amy Masalomani.
Still moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Auditor ineligible homestead, requesting twenty-six thousand four sixty-five, amount available for additional appropriation, nine thirty-two eight seventy-three, Councilman Brad Beavers, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay.
I got a question for the auditor.
Okay.
What is this? For your office, or? Okay. Thank you.
It's been moved to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item I, twelve twenty-two, Public Safety Communications, two thousand eighteen, one forty-four amendment, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reassessment fund transfer three dollars, is there a motion?
Move.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we got a lowed highway special distribution requesting four hundred and seventy-two thousand three nineteen, amount available for additional appropriation, three seventy-eight eight sixty, or four eighty-two nine sixty-five. Councilman McKinney, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Where's this going, Rick?
Yeah, exactly.
This is completing one of the community crossings projects, um, small structure on Cynthiaan Road, uh, two hundred and thirtieth street approximately.
Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Digital Ortho Photography Fund, requesting fourteen three ninety-six, amount available for additional appropriation, three seventy-eight eight sixty-seven, Councilwoman Masalomani, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Youth Assistance Program, a reduction of five to seven oh seven, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight one one two, two thousand sixteen, SC double A P grant transfer of three thousand one twenty-eight, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Immunization Grant Fund, requesting thirty-one thousand nine oh six, amount available for additional appropriation, thirty-one thousand nine oh six, Councilman Beaver, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Okay, what is, that's
It's a, it's a grant we get
Seconded, okay, go ahead.
It's a grant we get for
It's a grant, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Federal Highway Reimbursement Fund, requesting thirty-nine thousand four seventy-nine, amount available for additional appropriation, thirty-nine nine ninety-seven, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eighty-two twenty-five, sixteen point six oh six, two thousand fourteen, SC double A P fund grant, requesting five thousand seven hundred fifty-three, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd make the motion, I'd put Q and R together, these are, these are, uh, two of the same grant.
Seconded.
Uh, quick question, is this, um, getting more of the yellow or more of the orange, or one or the other, because I know you were short on one of them, I believe?
Uh, it's a State Criminal Alien Assistance Program grant. That comes for incarceration and
For the uniforms, okay. Which one were you short, the yellow ones? Yellow, okay, so that, okay.
It's been moved to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the County IBD Incentive Fund, two thousand eighteen, one forty-four amendment, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we have T, Community Crossings Grant Fund, requesting one million four hundred and seventy-two thousand three nineteen, amount available for additional appropriation, one point five million, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No, this is reappropriating money.
This is reappropriating, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ninety-one thirty-four, two thousand seventeen, IPAC Prosecution Grant, requesting ten thousand, amount available for additional appropriation, ten thousand, Councilwoman Masalomani, is there a motion?
Still moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. That will be the close of the public hearing. Sheriff, do you have anything?
Uh, I just want to say thanks to all of you for your assistance on the jail expansion. Um, it's been a lot of work on a lot of folks' parts, and I certainly appreciate your moving forward, and other than that, I just want to say
Matt, thank you, Sheriff.
You too, Sheriff, thank you.
Council Attorney? Adam Auditor?
Of course I do. Um, year end, we have a transfer of funds that I'd like you to amend and put on the agenda for six thousand dollars, and this is for, um, an annual maintenance fee, and it's all a timing issue, so.
I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda to add this to it.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to, uh, transfer six thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
See, Brad really likes you.
I'm glad somebody does.
[laughing]
I make it difficult, I know.
When you get down, let's not delay. Before we close, okay?
Okay.
Look where you hit it, I got a question.
Brad, I have one more thing, uh, for the, good of the, the council. Um, as we continue throughout month end, we may have, um, instances where, uh, departments might not have checked their balances and things. Uh, we've done it a couple different ways. One year, uh, you allowed us, the auditor's office, to make transfers, and we ratified those transfers in January of the following year, or you've called special meetings. And Dawn and I were talking about the night, that tonight, and wanted to know what your pleasure would be.
I'm okay to let him
I'm okay as well, letting it go and ratify it in January.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it.
Somebody else over here? Go ahead.
I had a clarification question. Brad had a question earlier, when he asked something about some of these twenty eighteen amendments, whether or not it was new money or extra?
So, and, and new money, no, but there were some, and this goes back to the personnel discussion, as far as the salaries, if I, on most of them, we'll go back to them individually.
Well, the ones I'm looking at, Amy specifically, where it's the two percent, so that's extra money.
Yes. Well, no, 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 so, it's how you look at it.
Okay.
So, the answer, yes, you could look at it.
So, was that a discussion at Personnel Committee? Because we didn't budget it. That's what I'm wondering.
We didn't talk about it.
This is a Personnel Committee decision?
Well, so, the explanation on it, yeah, and, and again, it can be interjected by Steve Schwartz as well. Basically hit, there were three employees, specifically three, if I'm not mistaken, that hit the max, was it five? That they basically are at the max, and there's nowhere they can go. And so, ultimately, they continue to get the same pay, and everybody else is kind of moving up. And so, the discussion was, was it one percent, or, and again, I don't know if the documentation was divided, I believe you got the Personnel Committee notes, I did not.
Didn't we talk about this?
There was discussion previously, yes.
She said two percent is actually it. I mean, we, I, I, on these, we
Is to make up for last year, because they didn't get anything last year.
Well, I thought they all, with, they always got the percentage like in one check in January.
So, but there But there was discussion, I don't know that, again, as far as how do we alleviate the issue, which again, there was a handful of them. Um, and so, when we talked in Personnel, in order to, the two percent was for this year, and so, yes, you're seeing it from a, again, outside the base, that now it's going to be inside the base in order to account for those increases in insurance. So, ultimately, they're not getting a pay decrease if you take away the outside. So, it, it, again, there were si- simple solutions for five, which is to ultimately increase them by one percent, here if me be correct.
I think it was, it was a little bit, but
Like point eight seven percent. It was point eight seven or point eight three percent.
So, just, I'm clear, we're taking the two percent and giving it to their base, but they're not getting another two percent in a lump sum check.
Right, that is correct.
And that's just for twenty eighteen.
That's, and it, yes, and it basically is making up for seventeen and eighteen, because they did not see a hard increase in seventeen, and everybody else did. I mean, all of our other employees
I understand
Right, so, it's just allowing them to catch up, since the last time we had done the study was for, I think we actually did the study.
Right. I just, I mean, in, in business, you're at your max, you're at your max, you don't get
Plus, we, plus, we sat down and we did hours putting these bands together, so
Right, and like, like you said, the, the, the banding, the system itself works, but you do have those isolated employees, where you're gonna have those special circumstances, which I think we said we would have that dialogue or that discussion, because you're ultimately penalizing them. Not giving them, everybody else is having a decrease to their base, and as time goes on, they stay stagnant.
Happens when you stay in your job so long. Industry, in, in private business, you purchase stuff, or you move on to another job.
Most of the time, in business, being in business, you do see the cost of living increase, which ranges roughly between one to five percent, depending upon the business in which you work.
But not my position, but one, if our colleagues to the left are listening to us
They don't
It's not that, I, I understand the discussion, but we, we do need to stick more to the bands. If, if somebody's at their job that long
And Steve and, and Jeff were both in the meeting, so if they have any comments to interject as far as why we made the decision that we did, I mean, if you want to tell those five people that they just aren't gonna see an increase, one percent, whether you're looking at cost of living or tax on insurance, however you want to look at that, that's fine, that's your decision. I don't necessarily think that it's a justifiable
My question was during the meeting, I don't know why they were isolated to begin with.
Well, you're all, you're gonna have special
And I, and I agree, but you gotta understand also that the reason they are at that max is because they are very, they do very, very well at what they do, and they've gotten to that max because of that.
Well, yes, but also it's because they stayed in their job very, very long, too, so
And we have, and we don't want to
No, because none of these people, actually, that's a completely inaccurate statement. We're not dealing with people, this is, we're not looking at a longevity, this isn't necessarily people that have sat here for thirty years, and I'd have to go back
I looked at one of them, and
Mike, how long have you been here? Four years?
Yeah. Well, again, I don't want to pick somebody out right now, I'm just saying
Yeah, I don't, what, I understand what you're saying, Rick, and I, I do think that we should have this discussion at, at next year's budget. What do we do with the people at the max? We'll have it during budget hearing and not leave it to a
Exactly, right. And I was just trying to clarify, because I didn't
Ultimately, it came down to the fact that it was missed in budget hearings, we did not address it, and so, the ultimate resolution was to have the discussion in Personnel. And you really, again, yes, you're seeing a two percent with this year, but you're not gonna necessarily see that next year, it depends on what's decided.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on this, uh, subject?
Let me ask Brad a quick question on it.
I got a couple of
Um, I got, just want to ask you a quick question on that, Brad. For us to be able to hit budget time, when would you want, when do you think is the best month for Personnel to find that out and discuss it? Is it May?
No, I, I think it's when we're talking, when we, during the budget hearing, when we start talking about percentage of increase
Okay.
We just have to think about, who do we got, how many we got hitting max?
Okay, you want the Personnel Committee to talk about it ahead of time and bring it up to budget, or, okay?
I don't particularly have a problem, I understand what Rick's concern is, and I do too. I don't particularly have a problem with you guys dealing with it, since
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying that. I just want to make sure I'm clear for next year, what the expectations are.
I just think it'll be a, a discussion that we need to remember to have with the auditor, look, look through our list and see who's hitting max this year, and, and how we're gonna deal with it.
Okay, good enough.
Because again, Jeff, again, I'm gonna say this is the first time in twenty-one years that we've done this. I mean, we've always before, they got this lump sum check in January, and so, all of a sudden, now we've changed something in twenty-one years, so
Yeah.